I'd ask that people try to maintain a three-minute rule on their public comment. Is there any member of the public present in the room who would like to make public comment? Is there any member participating by video that would like to make a public comment? Oh, great. Hearing none, we will close public comment. And actually, we'll leave public comment open for a moment to welcome Javier Correio, who I believe has joined us.
Yes, yes, Chairman, he is, he's on the screen and admitted, but I don't know if he has his microphone on.
Can you hear?
Good morning, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
We can, we can hear you.
Great, well, it's a pleasure to meet all of you, and it's certainly a privilege to have been appointed to the board. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you moving forward. My apologies that I cannot be there in person, not feeling too great this morning. And out of an abundance of caution, I wanted to remain home and not spread this little bug that's going around. But it's a pleasure to meet all of you.
We appreciate you watching out for our health, and we welcome you and likewise look forward to working with you. I will, you can correct me. Member Correio is a government affairs professional, and I, I know because I work with a state-chartered credit union that he is also a board of a very prominent credit union and a longtime member of the community. So we look forward to your participation. Administrator Armstrong, do you have anything additionally?
I would say that I welcome you with open arms and look forward to working with you over the two-year term that you have as a member of this board.
Any other comments? Very good. Then, Madam Secretary Mark, us as having four members present?
Yes, Chairman.
And now I will close public comment. Next item of business is item three, review and approval of our minutes of the board meeting of December 21st, 2022. I haven't done these for a while, and we've instituted--
We were notified by the Attorney General's office that we should, we should at least in some form do some type of minutes relative to that. They are not as detailed as our meetings in terms of, we do have our, we do have our videos that are on the web, but at the same time, they basically characterize the actions that you've taken relative to the meetings that we've had. So we'll be doing these from this point forward.
Any members of the board, save Member Correio, who would be disqualified from acting on this matter because he was not present, does any member of the board have any additions, changes, corrections?
No.
I would entertain a motion to adopt.
So move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please stand by saying aye. The record should note that Member Correio did not participate because he was not present. Our next item is item number four, industry discussion. This matter is on the agenda so that we can take input from members of the industry on issues that should be brought to the attention of the board and the authority for concerns or questions. Is there any member of the industry who would like to address us? Seeing a massive rush to the public, here's to be no industry discussion items, so we will close agenda item four. That brings us to agenda item five, staff reports. Let's begin, Armstrong.
First part of my administrative report deals with an executive order that was just put in place by our new governor, Governor Lombardo, in terms of putting a pause on any regulation or regulatory actions until we do a full review of the actions that we've taken in the past. That is something that is specifically going to be done because there has been a BDR that will be submitted by the Legislative Commission that specifically states that both the NTA as well as the TA will go through a comprehensive review of all of their statutes and all of their regulations and make recommendations to the commission as to what needs to be changed. Should we workshop that and start that process? We will also have within the next month or two, an informal workshop, because I don't believe that the governor has stopped us from doing that in terms of having a discussion in terms of preliminarily getting on that task, because I believe the legislature is going to have us accomplish over the next biennium, so that's something to do. We're going to go through all of our statutes and all of our regulations and try to bring them up to speed from the 70s in which they were originally put into place. That's my fault. And it was, of course, a crank call.
At least it wasn't the governor.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't the governor calling. One of the things that I'm going to be doing over the next two weeks is there are some internal changes that we would like to make within the agency in terms of making our procedures a little easier for the companies as well as the drivers deal with. I want to have a discussion before I do that with all the industry representatives. And I've set up meetings for the next two weeks to talk to them. And also to, I haven't been out in the, in the ranks for a while, so I need to talk to people and find out exactly what they're thinking, especially since we're coming up on a legislative session and trying to figure out exactly what our positions are going to be. And also, I'm also in the process of revising the budget for the next legislative session. Hopefully, we'll have it finalized, hopefully after the 23rd of January, when the governor will make his State of the State address. If there's going to be any changes in terms of the actual budget that we've submitted. The budget we submitted asked for additional support personnel in both enforcement as well as our audit section. We also are going to have an additional administrative person dealing with licensing that is going to be coming on board. Also, there is a provision for a change of the chief investigator position to become a deputy administrative position. That is something that needs to be approved by the legislature, as well as getting eight additional vehicles to replace, eight of the 26 vehicles that we presently have that are presently at the end of their useful life. So we're going to live long with the vehicles that we have, according with the new eight. The new eight will come from a multiple contract. Looking at that in terms of those are basically the major budget enhancements that we're going to have. It doesn't create a situation in which we are going to go into red or anything of that nature because of this particular 5 million dollar reserve to the tax cap authority. And we also add 1.2 million rides per, per month at this particular point on average, which is pretty good. Even though we dropped a little bit in December to 993, I think that that's as close to a million as you, as you can get. So the industry is showing strong growth and strong resilience in the present market. We expect that to continue with all the different events that are coming, the concrete, the Formula One, which we are a part of, and other things that we're trying to do. Another thing that we're also doing is that we're going to staff our officers with Narcan in case something happens on the street that causes a situation in which their likely needs to be. So that's something that we're going to get our officers ready to administer Narcan in terms of impacting on the street. In terms of our statistics--
Before we move on to that, are there any questions on--
Oh, I have a question.
Did you see, did you say the agency has a $5 million reserve? That is, that is a significant increase from just a year ago. You, you mentioned that you're going to be requesting support personnel in enforcement. Have you thought about requesting additional officers?
That's, that's part, that's part of, that's part of the request. Enforcement officers are part of that request. That's, that's what I was talking about in terms of that. I'm requesting at least two additional enforcement professionals at this particular point in that request.
Two officers and then additional support personnel?
Yeah.
And you said there was a BDR designated, not by the Ledge Commission, but by somebody to update NRS 706 as it pertains to TA and NTA?
Yes.
That's the Sunset.
Yes, the Sunset Commission. Sunset Commission needs to make a determination as to whether that agency should be discontinued, whether they should be combined with other things and things of that nature. We have been on their radar for at least the last five to seven years, from what I understand. And they go through this exercise every, every year. And this year, we've come to a conclusion that before you make a determination as to whether or not a combination is appropriate, that we both need our regulations and our statutes looked at in order to be able to make a better determination as to whether or not that is something that's possible, not possible, or whatever, based upon each of the agencies. Each of the agencies need to get their, their statutes in order. And that's what we recommended to Legislative Commission as well as Sunset Commission. And that's why they're going to put forward a BDR to have a study for us to do that within the next biennium.
I'm familiar with the Ledge Committee. The Ledge Committee either, well, the Sunset Committee would either recommend that--
They recommend, Sunset Committee--
Let me finish.
Okay.
They would either recommend that the agency be deactivated, they recommend that the agency continue, or in, in the case that you're talking about, they would recommend that the TA and the NTA be combined.
That's correct.
Have they made a recommendation yet, either way?
They will not.
Okay, so you're saying that there's a BDR--
Yes.
To do specifically what, to update NRS 706 as it pertains to both agencies?
Yes.
Okay, and this, so I'm just curious as to who's working on that BDR, because we--
That BDR was submitted by the Legislative Commission. They're the ones that submitted the BDR.
Okay.
Remember that.
So my question is, we, we had a year ago or something, we were talking about updating the regs, and we had work groups for industry to bring to you, to the agency, regs that they perceived were outdated or were, you know, obstacles, that kind of thing. And I, I think we wound up not making any progress on that because we, I can't remember, we got sidetracked. So is that going to occur in this BDR? And is industry being asked to work on it?
Everyone will be working with it. That's, that's the process in terms of how we do regulation. We have to--
But hang on, BDR, BDR is not going to change regulation.
No, BDR is not going to change, but it's going to authorize the ability for us to look at both statutes and regulations. They are going to authorize the agency to be able to create interim study that specifically looks at all of our regulations, the NTA and the TA, what needs to be updated, what does need to be updated. So we're going to go through the regulatory process through this interim study that's going to be created by legislature.
My understanding is slightly different. My understanding is that the BDR will cause for the creation of a legislative interim committee.
Gotcha.
The legislative interim committee is going to perform the review of the statutory scheme and the regulatory schemes and whether or not, to what extent it, they need to be modernized. And the specific, one of the specific discussions that Director Reynolds and Administrator Armstrong and I were at is the use, removing from statutory scheme impediments to implementation of technology. Some of the statutory schemes are written such that you might not be able to use technology. And also, they're going to look at rate-making of the two agencies. And, and this is just Dan Reeser's interpretation of what I heard the following is. That, that is the process through which they're going to try to determine whether or not the agencies should be separated or combined. But there was no, let's say, the commission made no recommendation of doing either of those. The recommendation they made is, we don't have enough information to know whether to do that.
Gotcha, so the BDR will form a committee specifically to do that.
Right.
Legislators.
Got you.
Got you.
I would ask that the agency add to that discussion with that commission the changing of statute and regulations that winds up causing the penalties under the TA's portion of 706 and the NTA's portion of 706 to differ for the same violations? Because I think that's a significant impact to--
Director Reynolds actually pointed that out during one of the hearings is that you can be one of these companies in two different, subject to two different regulatory bodies. Same event could occur, and you would pay dramatically different penalties.
Yep.
And you'd also be hit twice--
Yeah.
--in two, two--
It could be, yeah, you could be double penalized.
Okay, and the last question I had, you said you, you're renewing your, or, or creating a contract with Fleet? Are you going away from the agency on vehicles?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Have you discussed the managing by fleet of police vehicles with any other agencies? Because you, you may, you may want to, before you allow them to do it.
Let me put it this way, that they can't be any worse than what I presently have.
Well, you're presently self-managed. You own, you own the vehicles.
I own the vehicles. But at the same time, there's a question of maintenance and things of that nature that has been lacking some years, that I need someone outside the agency to deal with that management so that my officers are not responsible for that management and making sure that the vehicles stay as tipped out by the mission.
Gotcha, so I guess my question, because your agency vehicles are aging, are you planning on turning those vehicles in and having Fleet replace them? Or are you just going through, to a maintenance contract with them?
No, we're going to have, we're going to, we're going to transition the entire fleet to Fleet, but we only can do that in pieces because the legislature would not allow probably us to add 26 cars on the budget in terms of trying to do that. So we're going to start with, see how it works.
That's it?
Just one question, Administrator Armstrong. Have the governor's office given any indication how they feel about this BDR?
I have not received any, anything from the governor's office at this particular point, knowing anything--
It's silent at this point.
Silent at this point. I would presume that as the legislature heats up, that, that we will get some guidance in that situation. But I don't see the BDR itself being that controversial, so I don't know whether, what the governor's office is going to weigh in one way or another in terms of--
Well, my experience in the past is most, as, as the head of the executive branch, governor's offices are just in general not happy with the Legislative Commission becoming the executive branch. And what you've described, this might be viewed as that. So I was curious if there was any indication, knowing it is early on, on how that is going to work.
We shall see.
Shall see.
In terms of--
Before we move on.
Oh.
Member Correio, do you have any questions or?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one question. And, and I will acknowledge that my knowledge on this is based to what, based on what the news media said. My, my understanding is the governor also ordered suspension of 10-- each agency was supposed to select 10 regulations that could suspend or repeal.
I did see that. We're in the process, I'm in the process of talking with the director's office as to what that means. Also, the question being is whether or not our power to possibly do emergency regulations based upon the public safety exception that the governor created, we're still talking about that as to how that affects our agency since we do have these functions.
Will you keep us apprised--
I will do that.
--that we're going to start suspending--
I will.
Because we might have a view of what is a priority or not.
And I, I would want to discuss with the industry if we're going to do that, that, what those 10 would be in terms of what we're talking about.
Thank you. That, that, I don't think there are any other questions on your initial report, so proceed, thank you.
Total number of citations written for the month of December was 46. Total number of violations, including impounds, was 52. We resolved 49 in the month. One hearing was held and one guilty was found. And I'm happy to have a, and we had one vehicle released, so it looks like one impound during the month of December. Is that right, Amy?
Yes.
Citations, summaries, there was one case that was held, one case that was trial-held and the guilty was found. A majority of the citations were for basically obey law, safety, comfort, inconvenience. People sometimes don't understand exactly what that means. What that means is violation of traffic laws or things of that nature. So that's the catch-all requirement that exists for us in terms of when someone violates a traffic law or does something that is not in 706, that the officers are sworn to uphold. So we have a majority of those, and we also had a majority of individuals having issues with taxi stands. That's something that I'm having a meeting with the city attorney as well as the head of parking because there's some issues dealing with that. And I want to get that resolved in terms of tickets both given by the TA as well as the parking enforcement in terms of dealing with that. I may also have to, also have a discussion with the airport relative to their practices in terms of dealing with drivers and whether drivers can or cannot appear on their premises after infractions. That's a discussion I want to have within the next month, and that's something that I'll report back to the board as to what results come from that.
I just ask one question--
Sure, you may. Yes.
Why it, there's, the second line is verbal argument, physical violence, and then halfway down citing the same knack, there's acts of physical violence. Are those the same instance, or why are they reported so?
I think that they're, they're, they're different at this particular point. Acts of physical violence are actual assaults, things of that nature. Verbal arguments, we have that, that happens kind of like all the time. So what's happening in terms of, a driver is a little heated and wants to have a discussion with our officers, and we try to make sure that that doesn't escalate to something that is more, more problematic. Physical violence is actually someone putting hands on someone. As you can see, we've done inspections at this particular point in terms of December of 2022, in terms of we've done a total of 107 OSN's issued, 24-hour out-of-service, 32 accidents. We reported 128. We've done 20 annual inspections for the month of December and 30 meter seals. That may be a question sometime in the future if we go to meteors that are more technologically advanced than what we presently have. Next to the industry, industry stats. In the month of December of 2022, we did a total of managed 48,607 elderly rides, which is pretty good in terms of what we're talking like December 22nd versus December 21. Number of credit card transactions, over half a million credit card transactions in December of 2022. Total monthly trips, December of 2022 is 1,025,000 trips total. Employee revenue per trip is about 19.8, $19.08 per trip in December of 2022. Our lease revenue per trip was 1971, a little higher than the revenue per trip for employee drivers. Our monthly trip comparisons, year-to-date total for the month of 2022 was 13,579 rides. You don't have to go through the year-to-date comparison relative to employee versus lease trips because we just went through that. Total number of medallions has not changed because this board is the one that authorizes that. 3,530 medallions are active at this particular point, and there are 1,051 lease medallions are active as well. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Going back to enforcement stats.
Yes.
Total number of violations cited and resolved within the month of 49, hearings held, one. That tells me that even after you've finally gotten your, your hearing officer filled, that you're concentrating on negotiating out citations? That's a good number, is that--
Most, most citations, the person comes in and pays. So that 49 is probably the people that come in and actually pay and resolve the matter. There are a number of pre-hearing situations in which we only have the hearing in which someone actually says, I want to hear it, I'm not going to pay. So this is actually a pretty good number in terms of these matters negotiated pre-trial as opposed to actually--
This is why I pointed out.
Yes.
So, good job. Yes, no, no more questions?
I have no questions. Member Correio?
No questions?
Questions? So, so that concludes-- that's-- People Council have any?
No, Chairman, and we do have our DAG present on my teams, and so I don't know if she has anything to report.
No, nothing additional to report.
Okay, thank you. Any future agenda items?
I might mention, oh, I don't know if this is appropriate for future, future agenda items or for the administrator's report, but there were a couple items in the, in past meetings that were brought up that I would like to hear updates. One, one being the problem with taxi stands down in the downtown area. And then another one was-- I just lost it, but, but there were those two. Anyway, if we could follow up with--
Yeah, taxi stand issue is one. I'm going to have a meeting next week on dealing with that issue. I think that issue seems to be heating up again. See if I can get that resolution, the actual individuals that make those determinations with the city of Las Vegas, and I'll report back to you as to--
So two items.
Yes.
First is, we had talked about getting a, we received a presentation on technology--
Yes.
--that would be competitive with the agencies. And--
I'm glad you brought that up.
And, and I was wondering if, and I remember specifically a couple of things we asked is, where is this being done now? And, and what is the success there? And I was hoping to hear back on that.
As a matter of fact, I'm supposed to be having a meeting after this meeting with the person that gave you that presentation, and he will give me an update, and I will give you an update. Or at the next meeting relative, relative to that, because I don't have that data at this particular point, but he probably has that data because he said he had an update.
And then the second item, and I leave this to your discretion in consultation with the director. I think we, as to the appointment of a fifth member to replace Member Rodriguez, we do need to select a vice chairman, because Member Thompson is, Vice Chairman Thompson's termed out. And so we need to do that, but I don't want to foreclose that somebody that the governor might be appointing would be that person. So that may not be at the very next meeting, but-- that, that should be done, you know, in case--
I will put that on my agenda.
--if somebody--
I'll put that on my agenda for my discussion with the director tomorrow.
Member Correio, that's probably not a little bit early for you to want to designate something on the record but our, for future action, but do you have anything?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate the opportunity to do so, but I'm going to dedicate some time and review some of the previous meetings leading up to today. And hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a little more input to provide.
There's nothing else that any one of the members want to raise under agenda item five? We'll close that. Takes us to our second public comment. Takes us to our second public comment session. This is on the agenda pursuant to matter of live statutes for the purpose of taking comment from the public on matters within the jurisdiction of the agency. No action may be taken. Is there any member of the public present who would like to address us? Seeing none, is there any member of the public participating remotely that would like to address us?
I do not.
He's raising their hand.
I don't see. Only one. I apologize. This popped up too reset. I do not see any, any questions, Chairman.
Very good. Then we'll close public comment. That brings us to adjournment. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? We are closed. So close to a half hour.
Yeah. It was. So we should expect an email or something regarding the workshop for the regs?
Sometime, as soon as, as soon as I get clarification from some people that are higher than me.